I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for the 20th, 2024. Can we please have real call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Fonderhide.
Present.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Khabrick.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese, present. In order to have a forum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a forum for this meeting.
Would you take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you. Would all that were able, please stand and join for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make that motion, ma'am.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Paul and a second from Vince. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First item on the agenda this evening is ordinance number 2024-18. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the third and final reading in full or by title only?
Move to read by title only.
I have a motion from Kevin to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Phil. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-18 by title only?
Ordinance number 2024-18, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing the city of Jasper, Indiana to enter a conditional project expenditure agreement, North Ridge Estates Project, and the grant of proceeds thereof to Kirsten's Development, Inc., Kirsten's Home and Design, Inc., and/or their assigns, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
A second from John. Opened up for the discussion.
This is the same ordinance that was presented at the October council meeting. If you recall, there was quite a bit of discussion at that time around a number of things, but specifically around the life of the TIF. And at that time, it was suggested that the ordinance be changed to reflect a 10-year lifespan of the TIF rather than 20 years. The discussion then and vote was tabled because at that time I did not feel comfortable. I didn't know whether we could in fact change the language to a 10-year TIF. After further review and analysis, we determined that in order to change the life of the TIF, through this process, we would need to start back at the redevelopment commission and go through the process and change the previous resolutions that had to be passed. So this ordinance does not have any changes. As I indicated in the memo that was sent out last week, the options then this evening are to vote on the, of course, have further discussion, but ultimately, as far as voting is concerned, to vote on the ordinance as is and allow the TIF to begin with a 20-year life and then analyze the need for the TIF once the debt is fully paid or to not to vote on this and let it die. And then we would have to start the process over or if the developer wanted to do that for, at a 10-year TIF.
On a 20-year TIF, we can sunset that at any time as we're going forward, right?
After the debt is paid.
After the debt's paid, you can sunset it. So at 10 years, the debt's paid, it can be sunsetted and it goes, goes away.
And the redevelopment commission would take the action on that, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is presented to the redevelopment commission every year for review?
That's correct.
I was just gonna throw in that it was not really just suggested to amend the language, but a motion was made and seconded to reflect a 10-year sunset phase. So it wasn't just suggested, it was, you know, a motion was carried 7-0 to reflect that.
I think.
The way the minutes read.
Well, things have come up since then.
I, I, we can't legally change.
I understand, I understand that in reflection of what you said, but it was in the minutes that this 10-year sunset would be implemented into this in some.
But I think you thought you could do that, right?
I.
She didn't know.
She didn't know.
I specifically said that I did not feel comfortable agreeing to change the language on the fly and that I would need to, to look at that. And it was my, my reflection was that we tabled the vote on the ordinance.
It was tabled.
A motion was made and seconded by Phil to amend the language in the ordinance to reflect a 10-year sunset phase on the third and final reading, motion carried. And then a motion was made by Chad Leiken and seconded by Vince Helming to table the third reading, motion carried.
Oh, on the second. Yeah, yeah, right.
What? No, this is third. The second was, it was approved on the second reading.
Right, right, right.
And then a motion was made to change the language.
So we voted to approve something that could not be approved?
That's correct.
Right.
So does that negate the second reading?
No, you approved the second reading five to two. You approved the ordinance on the second reading five to two. And then asked that the language be changed in a motion.
That was for the third reading.
For the third reading. I have it here.
I got you.
If you want to review it.
So, yes.
Renee, also, you had in your memo given us a schedule of if it wanted to start over to reflect a 10-year sunset. And I appreciate that, but that didn't include calling a couple of special meetings, which would certainly speed up that process. So instead of, and I have that somewhere here in my stack of papers, but instead of that being, let's say, the middle of January or the council meeting in January, realistically, that could happen yet in December if we called special meetings.
If, if we could, again, we'd have to have two redevelopment commission meetings and then two council meetings, special meetings. So I, I don't, I don't know what, what the likelihood is of us being able to call those special meetings, but we could try, could happen.
What, what is the process for us to suggest to the redevelopment commission on the 10-year sunset? Is there something that we can put in, like we, like we put a record on a deed? Is there anything we can include in the ordinance language that says for the RDC? Because again, RDC, RDC may be completely different members than what it is today. And in a conversation I had with Nancy just earlier on, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna make sure that 10 years from now that, that happens? Well, maybe none of us will be here. We just, we don't know.
Yeah.
There's nothing to, nothing that we can record?
Not that I'm aware. I've never heard of that. I mean.
And in the meantime, another project may come up and the RDC or the council at that time says, hey, we have this TIF in place. Let's just go ahead and keep it in for 10 more years. When that was not the original intent of that TIF.
Well, this definitely can apply to the area designated, correct?
I mean, I, I.
For the new development.
I do, I do appreciate what you're saying. My thought in looking at this is exactly the opposite. I think that what if there is a project that needs those funds that would support this area? What if it's a new fire truck or, I don't, I don't know what that might be, but what if those funds are needed to support this area? But now, if you go forward with a 10-year TIF, then you have eliminated the ability of that redevelopment commission and that council to have this, this fund in place as a potential opportunity to fund those projects.
Well, let's put the opposite stance on that. If it is sunsetted in 10 years and it's re-brought, rebrought up before the RDC and the council, could that not be extended for another 10 years at that point?
It can. That's what you heard Rich Starkey tell us at the last meeting. It absolutely could at that point.
So, I mean, why couldn't that happen then? I would rather have that happen than all of a sudden we have this 20-year TIF out there that will never sunset except for 20 years. I would rather have it re-upped, I guess you might say, after 10 years or whatever the payment period is, and then go for the extent if, if it was deemed necessary at that time.
And I guess some of my thoughts was in the conversation we had last time was talking about safety, police officers, fire truck, fire safety for that area. Something that came to my mind after the meeting and I would have thought of it before then, but these funds would be able to be used. And I checked, I believe, Renee and Kirsten had said something to the street, but if we decide to build the roundabout at 36th and St. Charles for ease of traffic or for safer traffic flow, that would satisfy being used towards more population in that area as well.
I understand.
That would be a good spot for that money to come from as well.
In any of those cases, you identify a project, it would have to go through a process identical to the creation of the TIF in that we would be amending the economic development plan that is associated with the TIF. So it would go to the council, it would go to the redevelopment commission, it would go to the plan commission, all to determine if the project is warranted and if it satisfies the criteria that supports that area.
You know, we've, ideally, we would love it to be paid for in seven years. I mean, that's an aggressive plan even, I would assume. Wearing my banker hat in the past, I mean, I've helped with developments all over and sometimes they just slow down. And, you know, the houses don't get built. So then what do you do? You know, then all of a sudden he's, he's done. He doesn't even get paid back. So I think with the RDC looking at it annually, I'm, I'm okay with the ordinance as written.
I am as well.
I'm trying to imagine 10 years from now, a, being on a council that is, is faced with looking at renewing it or not. And I, I can see how this was gonna play out. I can't imagine a scenario where they, where a council, given the numbers that were presented yesterday, even if they're half correct, I can't imagine a council voluntarily sunsetting it for perspective and for anyone who might be listening at home later on or watching this, reading later on, for perspective. If, if we chose to sunset, I mean, just magically in the year 2029, let's say it was paid back that aggressively and it, it, it's unrealistic, of course, but the numbers that they showed yesterday, if, if we sunsetted it in, in 2029, we would forego as a city $426,000 of revenue generated from the TIF. We would forego that and we would accept instead around $10,000 of revenue. And, and, and no city council is going to do that. I just can't imagine a scenario where, where it makes any sense to do that. And is, is Baker Tilly online with this? So if we can confirm that, is Kyle with us? Kyle, can you hear me?
I've done it.
At least he probably has to unmute.
Okay.
Hang on a second, Kyle. He's talking.
Hey, I want to do an announcement with that. I was blocked up, you know? Yeah, I don't mind. You have a question for me?
Yes, and so I just want to make sure that if, if we're talking numbers, if something is said that's incorrect, please, please chime in and correct that. But basically, that's, that's, I've got the gist of it, right? I mean, right now, we can generate, if I, if I task somebody with the job of, of finding a tool that creates $426,000 of, of revenue for the city without raising the current tax, property tax rate, and, and I need this money starting in, let's just say, 2029, that this, this proposed TIF fits the bill, if, if those are the parameters. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's only, there's only so many rate-driven funds that create new revenue. The rest of the funds are limited to the maximum levy growth for, you know, 4% each year. So what happens with that is when this TIF is passed through or expires, that satisfies the tax base. It only means a limited amount of new revenue, like you said, $10 to $17,000 floating around. The rest of that impact is the tax rate will decrease and there would be less circuit breaking losses depending on if that particular taxpayer, that's a tax cap. It would be a combination of those two things, but it really wouldn't be new revenue to the, to the city unless property tax bonds were issued to kind of instill that tax rate decrease. So I think a lot of what Chad said is definitely correct. Although, that is still a good thing, obviously, and we just have to compare those.
Other comments?
I don't think we got an answer. I didn't see an answer on whether or not the utilities pay back the developer for water. They don't?
This will be in lieu of that and there will be an agreement, a waiver signed. So this will be for that.
Is that, is that, is that what we want to do? So there, there is no, there, there is no, so the state says, and this, this is for main extensions. The state says utilities must pay for that. And then this is in lieu of that, but it satisfies the state rule.
Yes.
But as a city, we can ask our utilities for reimbursement?
Okay, we could.
Okay, that's worth a discussion anyway. And, and someone had asked, and I, I just took it for granted that the answer was yes, are, are we, every, every utility in, in the, in the proposed development will be Jasper Utilities?
No.
No? Okay. No electric?
We'll have two, right? Water and wastewater?
Water and wastewater.
Yeah, there won't be any gas though.
No gas.
No, no gas plan in that development.
There'll be no gas ran at all in that development or just not Jasper gas?
Ruger Kirsten's on behalf of Kirsten's Development, Inc., there will be no gas ran to the subdivision for the tier factor.
An all-electric subdivision?
Correct.
We have several.
Wind song is that way now, isn't it?
Wind song.
And that was determined, again, in an effort to keep block costs down because installation of gas utilities is expensive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay. I just make a comment there. I, I think I've come full circle here. That extra time has, has helped me. If it's a math problem, I, I see numbers that are convincing. And I represent the taxpayer of Jasper, not, not any other entity. The, the impact, the impact at, at 2029, that, that, when I said the city would forego $426,000 to receive $10,000 instead, the impact to the school was nil, the impact to the township was nil. The impact to the county on the numbers we saw yesterday was about 10, about 7,000, and the impact to the airport authority was about $732. We do have, as our discretion, we could do pass-through to compensate for that at that point in time. So again, if it's a math problem, I feel convinced, so I've come pretty full circle on this.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll call for a vote. I have a motion from Kevin and a second from John. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
A note to opposed, five ayes. Okay. So ordinance number 2024-18 has passed. Next item on the agenda is the IFA Residential Infrastructure Program from North Ridge Development Application on behalf of Kirsten's. Is that right? I don't have anything on that.
No, there is nothing. It's just a motion.
I think it's just approval to continue so they can apply for the application, I think.
Right, okay.
Make a motion that we, let's see, let's just proceed with the application, correct?
Authorize the city to.
Application.
Okay, so I would make a motion to go ahead and grant the IFA Residential Infrastructure Program request from North Ridge Development Application for the city to move forward.
I'll second that motion.
A second from Nancy, motion from Paul. Further discussion on this?
So the Indiana Finance Authority has a program called the Residential Infrastructure Program. And through that program, the city can apply for a project to receive low-interest funding in the form of a bond. And it can be for the purpose of, or it must be for the purpose of infrastructure development and can be for a development such as North Ridge. In this case, as we've met with the, with Ruger and discussed how this process would work, the city would apply for, apply for the program. And if awarded, the Kirstens as the developer would enter an agreement, would first of all get a letter of credit from their lender that would guarantee repayment of the bond if, in the event that they were unable to do so themselves. So the city is in that way insulated from risk because, again, if the developer cannot repay the bonds, then the letter, the lender that signs the letter of credit would be available to pay those, those bond payments.
And it's a competitive program from what I understand that, you know, there's no guarantee they'll even get it. But compared to conventional financing, I think it's saving them, what, 5% or something like that?
Yeah.
5% of several million dollars is a lot of money.
And this is a relatively new program ruled out just as a stimulus toward development housing.
And it's just a legal requirement that the city, the applicant, but there's, it represents no risk to us or to our debt limit.
It is not considered a part, it doesn't go against our debt limit. And as I said, no, of course, there are other communities that negotiate with the developer in a different way. But in this case, the developer has agreed to get a letter of credit. And so that is, that's what affects the risk to the city.
It, it minimizes any risk at all. There's always risk to anything, but there's very little risk to the city.
I agree.
And Ruger, the amount that you're looking for on this is about 3.6 million?
So this program, I guess, starting from a little bit to give background of how it all came about, be brief because I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight, but we were notified, I believe, at the last meeting, I said we were not selected for the Ready 2.0 funding.
Right.
And then right after that email was sent, I got a call from ROI and they said this is a perfect project for the IFA Riff Program. And they highly suggested that, that we at least submit an application. Again, as John alluded to, it's highly competitive, there's limited funds and it's across the entire state of Indiana. So I don't know how many people are applying, but I feel as if the ready funds are off the table. Although this is not traditional grant funds like what the ready is, it all has to be paid back, but it is at a discounted interest rate, as everybody here probably knows by now. And again, in an effort for us to reach our goal of achieving affordable, more affordable lot prices, if this is a tool offered by the state of Indiana that we can at least apply for and try to get and then pass on some of that to the residents here, we thought it was worth a shot applying for it. So we'll see what happens, but I don't, I don't know what'll happen.
In the difference between the regular bank rate and this, how much do you think that might save you?
Didn't calculate the full savings mainly because I don't know what the total amount would be. Josh, I got, I got educated on this in the last two weeks, so honestly, it's all very new to me as well. And it all depends on, the trick on this is finding the right equation because it could either be a full draw or it has to be a lump sum deposit or on a draw basis. That question hasn't been answered yet, so if it's going to be on a lump sum distribution and then we're paying interest day one on the funds that we receive for a project that's going to be developed over several years, everybody here is good at math, you know, that's a lot of carry costs for no reason. So if that's the case, what we request would be much smaller to utilize in the first two rounds because we know we're gonna expend that very fast. So what that would save and how long we're carrying it, how long the lots take to sell, I really don't know what that number ends up being. There's too many variables.
Draw as you need it.
Pardon?
Hopefully it's a draw as you need it.
That's what I requested. And the two representatives that I spoke with, they said they were bringing it back to the program manager and they were going to discuss it. I haven't heard back. I don't know if anybody else has, but I'm still waiting to hear.
So would the program people actually communicate with the city before they communicated with you?
I think.
For the award, the award would come to the city.
And just curious, Ruger, if you're doing some projects in any other communities, could you apply for this with another city or a town at the same time you have this one going?
I believe there's a limit on the number of projects that we can apply for as a.
I, I mean, if he was like in another town.
So I, I'm not aware that there's a limit on a developer. We hadn't.
We're not actively pursuing one?
But I mean, if something came up, it could be something to consider.
Potentially. I didn't ask the, I didn't ask them because I was just trying to digest just on this one because it was a lot of information in a short period of time. Yeah, I don't know that answer.
Any other questions?
You're supposed to obtain a letter of credit. Is there like criteria on that letter of credit that the lending institution needs or the city, that we need to know certain criteria on that letter of credit?
Yeah, there was a pre-typed template from the IFA that was.
Okay.
Very detailed.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that was provided by IFA.
Okay, thank you.
They have to be able to meet the IFA's letter of credit requirements.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have a motion from Paul, a second from Nancy on this. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-21. Could I have a motion to read this, this ordinance in the second reading in full or by title only?
Make the motion to read by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Kevin. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read ordinance number 2024-21 by title only?
Sure. Ordinance number 2024-21, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the city of Jasper, Indiana, truck routes and load limits and setting forth truck load limits and street restrictions for the city of Jasper, Indiana.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. Further discussion?
This was all put together by the street department and.
In, right, in coordination with the street department and engineering, we went through and made the few changes that were required and then did some cleanup on the table.
Okay, thank you.
And at the same time, it was requested that we look at truck route signage and we've.
Correct.
Got the street department looking at that.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I have a motion from Kevin and a second by Vince. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May I go ahead and make a motion to read ordinance number 2024-21 for the third and final reading by title only?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only for the third reading.
I'll second.
I have a second from Kevin. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read 2024-21 by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-21, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, providing for a uniform code for tra- Indiana, providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the City of Jasper, Indiana, truck routes and load limits, and setting forth truck load limits and street restrictions for the City of Jasper, Indiana.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is resolution number 2024-21. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read the resolution by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read resolution 2024-21 by title only.
Resolution number 2024-21, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, awarding a build operate transfer project and taking certain other related actions.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number 2024-21?
I still move.
I have a motion from Chad.
Second.
A second from Vince. Further discussion?
I would just like to say I appreciate all the changes that have been made to this over the course of maybe two months or whatever, but there was one area, section three, that I, I'm not an attorney, so I don't understand all of this, but what is section three, what is severability, if you could explain exactly what that means?
Sure, that is a paragraph that we include in every ordinance and resolution that we have, so that if any part of the document itself is determined sometime in the future to be unconstitutional or problematic, then that does not, in and of itself, make the entire document void.
Any other discussion? If not, I have a motion from Chad and a second from Vince. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is passed.
And on that, we were also promised at some point a timeframe on that project, so I know there's not been that much time, that's elapsed.
I promise, I'm working on that.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to keep that in the forefront.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-22. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Make the motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Kevin. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read ordinance 2024-22 by title only.
Let's go. Thank you. Ordinance number 2024-22, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing and establishing a policy for the electronic fund transfers for the City of Jasper, Indiana.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Vince.
I'll second.
And a second from Chad. Further discussion?
This ordinance came from our office, the Clerk Treasurers' Office. We've had some issues with the mail lately and some checks getting out, or getting to a vendor in a timely fashion, and we thought this would be a good time to explore the opportunity of doing electronic funds transfers for payments. It will not be our status quo, but we will select a certain few vendors to pilot the program with. Utilities is also on board, and this went to the Utility Service Board meeting on Monday night for approval also.
And this, they passed that under resolution USB 2024-5?
Yes.
On their end?
Any questions or discussion?
I don't know if you saw, but this is at the discretion of both the utility offices' controller and the city's, the Clerk Treasurers', control, well, their office.
Our office.
So, it won't become the normal way of doing, paying bills, but it is available to them when they deem they need it.
Is this going both ways, then? Does this allow our customers now to be able to send an electronic funds transfer to pay utility bill on a month without having a credit card?
Oh, you have to start the utilities, I think they already do that.
I think they do that, yeah.
An early mine.
Yep.
I'm curious, why would it not be the norm, though?
If, in the event that it became, if we had good success and felt that it was, it should become the norm, I think we would look at that, but we have to be careful, because we can't allow vendors to reach into our bank account and take money, so the push has to come from us, so I don't want it to just take off and everybody start doing it. I'd like to have some control first.
And Chad, the other thing is we pay claims once a month, and sometime that timeliness isn't the right time for a bill to be paid.
Rather than pay penalties, this keeps us.
Yes, keeps us from paying penalties, though.
With a less-than-reliable postal service at this point in time.
Although our Jasper post office is excellent.
They do great, but you know, that's the.
I heard that.
The other handoffs, right?
And, truthfully, this is probably setting this up for the norm into the future.
Yeah.
Right now, one step at a time.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion from Vince and a second from Chad. Any other discussion, please? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's first reading only, we'll go through two more readings soon. Next is ordinance number 2024-24. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Make the motion read by title only, please.
A motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Kevin. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2024-24, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, establishing a special use restricted donation fund.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from John. Further discussion?
I was involved in a meeting at the community foundation with a donor, and the community foundation, and the Park Department, who identified, there were funds at the community foundation for a specific project that they would like the Park Department to do. It was, it came to light that the community foundation wasn't able, the way the fund was set up, to earn interest on that account, so the idea was that the city would take it over in the restricted use donation fund, that we would be allowed to invest the money while we wait for the project to be approved or to come to fruition, so that we could earn interest on behalf of the donor.
It's a good idea.
For different things.
How much is that?
It's around $250,000.
Each time we have to do it.
My question was, I thought we had done several of these before, but it's specific.
We do, because it's a specific project, and we want the interest to go to this specific project, and we have other donation funds that have multiple projects under them that aren't earning interest, because it's more of an in-and-out type of thing, and it's difficult to track interest in that, in that respect, so we'd like this to be a separate fund that we can put the interest back into.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for a vote. We have a motion from Paul and a second from John. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass six. Next, we have a public hearing, and this is in relation to ordinance number 2024-25, which is vacating a platted public utility and drainage easement. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this?
Good evening, counsel. Brad Eckler, lead bros from Land Surveying and Engineering, here on behalf of the owners of Lot 1, Hunter's Run Estates, Brenda and Ted Sager. I believe, do you guys have an exhibit of the ordinance that shows?
Yeah.
There's two exhibits that kind of summarize this request. One is a red and blue highlight on the existing plat. Hunter's Run Estates was platted in 2018, I believe, associated with two, creating two single-family lots. Lot 1 actually had an existing structure on it, but now conforms as a platted lot to the UDO requirements, and so we do have an existing sanitary sewer that's encapsulated by a platted public utility and drainage easement that goes through Lot 1 to serve lot 2. There's a proposed residential addition to the house on Lot 1 that would impact that sanitary sewer and the easement, so we are here to present this vacation of the easement to allow us for this step, so that we can then install new storm public infrastructure and dedicate a new public utility and drainage easement to accommodate the addition. So, at the end of the day, we will still sustain wastewater and a public utility and drainage easement as they're today. We're basically just, part of this process allows us to relocate. So, the one exhibit on the plat shows the blue being, make sure I put you right, the blue being the new area, and the red is what we're here tonight for, being the petition to vacate that portion, and then there's an aerial image that has the blue and red as well, shows the existing structure, and then, or black and white, yeah, sorry. So, anyway, the one on the right is the existing that we're looking to vacate, and the one on the left would be the new. So, we do have the documents in place for the proposed new public utility and drainage easement, and so, basically, I think in the past, maybe we've had something like this, where maybe the timing of the vacation ensures that the new easement is in place, you know, prior to where that's, that's documented.
So, you have to come back after, you know, pass another 90 days. Once the new one is in place, or do you?
I don't, I don't believe, no.
And Brad, this has come about because they're putting an addition on that home.
Correct, yes, and the addition's going over the existing, within the existing platted easement. At the end of the day, we're not looking to remove anything that we have, just looking to relocate that location.
It's a lot of paperwork for a simple request.
Brad's wrong.
Sometimes not the favorite one you want to see.
Anyone else would like to speak to this?
May I say no one else from the public wanted to come forward and speak on this? I have to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Paul and a second from Kevin to close the public hearing. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing's closed. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
I'll make that motion. By title only, sorry.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-25.
Ordinance number 2024-25, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, vacating a platted public utility and drainage easement, Hunter's Run Estate, Lot Estates, Lot 1.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Will this require a public hearing at the next meeting again?
I think it's just one public hearing.
One.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks for all your hard work, putting that together. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-26. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the first reading in full or by title only?
Motion to read by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second from Kevin. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-26 by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-26, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, amending the rules and regulations for the operation of a natural gas system owned by the City of Jasper, Indiana, and fixing a schedule of revised rates and charges for the sale of gas by the Jasper Municipal Gas Utility.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. Further discussion?
So, this is just an amendment to the existing ordinance in inserting the termination date of the Hooterville gas repayment rates. So, as of the end of November 2024, which is the billing that just took place, the reimbursement for the cost of the Hooterville gas main extension has been fully paid, so we just wanted to clarify in the ordinance that the termination is November 2024.
And this was just for the residents in that additional area, or that service area?
That have gas service.
Correct.
So, I have a motion from Paul and a second from Vince. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution 2024-22. Could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
I have a second, second from Phil. All in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read resolution 2024-22 by title only.
Resolutions are, yeah, just resolutions.
It's a resolutions.
Gotcha, gotcha, sorry.
Resolution number 2024-22, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing a funds transfer, a community crossings fund.
Okay, could I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution 2024-22?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
Second.
And a second from John. Further discussion on this?
This is a transfer to the Community Crossing Fund for the Milling and Pavey Project. There was change order in the sum of $5,321.23 that was approved, but State Board of Accounts requires us to do this transfer to get the money into the Community Crossings Fund to pay the bill.
Thank you.
We better pay attention, right? We just got a nice big check from them on the next project. Is that correct?
We received, I forgot what the final amount, a million, two?
Yeah, it was 1.175, I think, or something like that.
Great.
Yeah.
I have the big check in my office.
She does.
You were holding the big check.
Does it weigh more than other checks?
It's not more than some, a little less than others, but.
Of course, they were hoping it was more.
Again, we've commented about community crossings, and it has been just a great program across the state, and the fact that communities can get some of their roadwork done and brought up to speed. Without that program, a lot of them would suffer. We see a lot of degradation in road conditions, sidewalks, so I'm really thankful that this program still exists, and with this time, we had a, not this particular Community Crossings Grant, but the new one we received, it's, we went in for as much as we could, and I think it's a two-for-one. When you get that kind of dollars, they match. match. That, that goes a long way in, in a city like Jasper, so.
And Mayor, when we apply for that, we have to be project-specific then, don't we? Yeah.
Yeah, the listing of projects was submitted, so. Now, we'll have to adjust because we're not, we didn't get the full amount we applied for. So, the street department with engineering will go through and they'll prioritize which ones we'll go with.
Still a nice boost to that budget.
Yeah. But with regard to this one, we're well underway. It's a fifty-three-hundred-dollar adjustment. Uh, I do have a motion from Nancy to accept and John seconded it. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, uh, we have ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Could I have a motion to consider this ordinance for one reading only?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
I have a second from Paul. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only, please?
A motion from Paul, read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three by title only.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance to transfer appropriations for the city of Jasper, Indiana, for the remainder of the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Further discussion?
I just have a question. On the third page on the ARPA, uh, it's being moved from contractual services to land purchase. What is, what's being purchased?
That was the, um, school property that we purchased. We had it in a contractual services line. I just needed to get it in the land purchase line.
That's a good question. Any other questions?
Um, this is just a standard, um, year-end transfer that we do to make sure that each department has not, um, gone negative in any accounts. So.
This time of the year gets a little bouncy.
Do we expect any more of these next month?
No, this should be it.
That's our expectation.
This is where we find out their fl- where their fluff is.
We did look and we asked them to look at what they may need for the remainder of the year so that we only have to do this once.
Yeah.
And we all need to sign this one right in our.
Yes, and Lisa graciously went downstairs and got a corrected copy with your name spelled right, so. But I got it in the nick of time.
Okay, I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Vince. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and. Next on the agenda. Uh, the redevelopment commission's TIF spending plan. Uh, really, is no action required? Is just sharing with you what the spending plan is? It was adopted by the R D C?
So, um, for next year, the D L G F is requiring that, um, redevelopment commissions adopt a spending plan and the process is that, um, it goes to the redevelopment commission for adoption and that it has to be, um, presented to the council. There's no action on your part. And then after it's presented to the council, um, our department will upload it to Gateway website so that it's public knowledge, um, that I can run down the spending plan with you. It's based solely off of, um, obligated money and some historic professional services expenditures that we have done in the past. Um, so we have debt service, um, for one point one million dollars and that is, um, what we anticipate to pay in two thousand and twenty-five on University Heights, um, on river, on the riverfront or the River Center and, um, the outdoor pool bond. So, those are payment obligations. University Heights, we, um, project that we'll have to pay them, to pay about forty thousand dollars towards that project, about five hundred thousand dollars, um, on the River Center and five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for payments on the pool bond. The second line is bond proceeds. These are the funds that, um, that we bonded for the pool. Um, we have about seven point nine million dollars left to pay Tabor Owens on that project and we anticipate that we will spend all of that money, if not the end of this year, next year for sure, on the pool project. Um, but it was determined that those bond proceeds needed to be included in this spending plan as well. And then we, um, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars for professional expenses that we've used to pay Baker to Liam Barnes in Thornburg, um, every year to do our TIF neutralization and things like that. And then twenty-five thousand dollars that goes to the Heart of Jasper for this facade grant program. Um, this is merely a plan. It can be amended at any time next year through the same process. If the R D C determines that they would like to spend money elsewhere that's not in this plan, we would just update the plan, present it to the R D C, or take it to the R D C for adoption and then present it to the council and upload the amended plan to Gateway.
Thanks for that explanation.
Ted, uh, just a comment. Did, did we reduce the grant to Heart of Jasper for facade grant program?
No, it's always been twenty-five thousand for that. There's other money that we pay out of Edit or to Heart of Jasper.
The other part of it. Okay. Okay.
I mean, even the, even that twenty-five thousand, they usually come and even ask.
For each one of, each payment. Yeah. Any questions? No action required, just for information. Again, it's a great tool and, uh, it's complex though, accounting.
Like everything.
Yeah. All right, with that.
I, I do have one other item.
Okay.
Mayor, if, just, just a reminder, I, if you recall, I put it on your, um, on your memo, the, um, the process that we use to pass ordinances. We have historically gone through, as you're well aware, a three-reading process. I'm, I, I, I think that that was a requirement at some point in time, I'm guessing, but I couldn't find, it's difficult to find old state, state law. At any rate, now, the law requires a two-reading process. It does not require three readings. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, you know. What, what it would amount to is rather than having meetings where we do the second and third reading back-to-back, we would just do a second reading. If, um.
Makes sense.
Of course, if there's a, a time when we have a second reading and, um, we're not comfortable with the language and want to change the language, it can be tabled. So, just because we eliminate a third reading au- automatically as part of the procedure doesn't mean that we couldn't hold something over for another, um, to review it and change it. It's just, it just wouldn't be a required process. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that up at the meeting so that it's something you can think about. And if you decide that you think that, that's something you'd like to proceed with, then m- my suggestion is that we would incorporate into our municipal code a section that spells out our process for ordinance, uh, for passing ordinances, just so that the community, um, has an opportunity to have a better understanding of how we operate and, um.
It makes sense.
We, we would never do the first and second reading at the same meeting, though.
Well, you could still do, go through the process of one reading only if you wanted to. But, um, as you know, that has to be a, a unanimous vote and then after that, it has to be a two-third, um, adoption. So, um, that still would be possible. It's just that the third reading would be eliminated.
Renee, what dictates whether an ordinance would be one reading only, because sometimes we have that, or whether it would require that two-step process?
That is purely your decision. So, um, there are times when it, a, a department will come to us with a proposed ordinance change that they, they believe they need, like, it's urgent and they need to have it, the effective date needs to be soon. Um, so, when I started, literally, I, I don't, I mean, except for things that were required, like when we have, to have a public hearing, when we adopt, for example, um, changes in the, um, in the, the U D O, different, things that require a certain process, we go through that. But otherwise, we had always, almost always done it for one reading only. I mean, it was almost always. And truthfully, I, I didn't really realize how unusual that is. Most communities do not go through, do the one reading only process as a matter of course. Um, so over the past, I'd say, two years, we've tried to do, um, the one, two, and three reading process as the regular process and a one reading only process only for things that, um, are more urgent in nature. Um, but then, then we get to the, the point where we have the second and third reading of many ordinances back-to-back in an evening. And it, it just, to me, it seems silly to have, uh, second reading. You read it, um, you pass it, there's no question about it. Then right back-to-back, we do the third reading. So, I just wanted to offer that to you, get your thoughts. And, and if that's something that you want, then I can draft that language.
Could a motion be made to have a third reading if something needed to be changed again? Like if it was a one and two reading and then you?
Yeah.
Still, the option would be there. Mayor, I wanted to mention about the, um, communication system that I've been promoting that for years. I don't know how many. But anyway, so Rob Young, really with the utilities, has kind of grabbed a hold of that with the small subcommittee. And, and we did through the Board of Public Works to approve a, um, communication tool called GoGov, which will be, um, like an app on your phone so that you could be alerted of things going on in the city. People will have to sign up for it. So, we have a whole process now to go through to get people to sign up for that. But I think, again, it's kind of a tool of the future, but really, it's, the future is the present for something like that. So, I'm very pleased with that and happy that Rob and some others, I'm not naming just him, have taken, uh, hold of that.
And, and that's an expansion of the program we already u- utilize, is that correct?
Right, it is another pro- and that will be paid for, um, this year by the utilities. And then next year, half will come for utilities and half will come out of.
Actually, we paid fifty-fifty. Kale, the personnel department is paying half and the, um, utilities will be built back from.
Who all may use it right now?
Pardon me?
Who, who all may use the, the system?
Anyone could, but, oh, you mean, oh, any department could. So, there'll be a onboarding of, um, like orientation, how to use it. So, any department could use it.
With its timeline proposed for that or?
Um, Rob might have one. Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna go through the training here in the next few weeks. And then, uh, there will be, um, communication out to the public because it's only as good as the number of people that sign up for it to get the notifications. And so, there will be, there'll be a campaign for the public to, to adhere to.
So, getting back to Renee, uh, you know, we kind of jumped there. Uh, I think, I'm, I'm okay, uh, to propose that, uh, stay with just two, two readings.
Yes. I'm, I'm thinking too, is there any way that we could get, like, if it's a first-time reading or an only one reading to get it more than three business days before the meeting? Like, could we say that that would have to be ten days before the first reading, rather than getting it on a Friday afternoon? And if we move it to just one or two readings?
Right, we have had that conversation as well, um, looking at the, uh, creating or.
Getting a deadline in for the agenda.
The, the deadline for when the agenda gets determined. Um, right now, the agenda ha- has to be in and, and done by Friday before the council meeting. Um, and, you know, we've talked about what the council prefers, if that's the Friday before, the Friday before the Friday before. So, ten days, um, then we just have to, I, stick to our guns, you know? That, that's the issue.
I know, everybody's kind of busy.
Getting information into us so that we can get everything prepared and out to you is, is always the difficult part of it.
Even the Monday before the, Monday before the Monday before the meeting. Give you that extra two days.
Yeah, the Monday before. I was gonna bring that up also, uh, Renee and I have a discussion. Maybe like a ten-day deadline for things to be on the agenda prior to the council meeting would be very helpful.
Yeah, I was disappointed I couldn't make that meeting one day. Um, I watched it twice.
It would be something we could strive for anyway. Is that, you, really, you said that the deadline is like the Friday before, but is that set in stone somewhere as a policy? Because I can remember when I first came on the council, truly, we would get stuff the Tuesday before the Wednesday meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the day before. That's right.
The day before, yeah.
Well, sometimes it was piecemealed too. Uh, you know, if it was a one you had ready prior, would, it would be ready, you know, sooner.
I think some other ideas that we have brainstormed is possibly, um, including a council member in our pre-council meeting or also, um, creating, you know, almost a working document that you guys have access to, um, that would show like, you know, this month, the things that are going on to the next month, second and third readings. And as things come up, could be added, you know, at that time. So, I, I think we are definitely working on some of that.
That'd be helpful. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Vince.
We don't, do we need to vote on having?
She prefers it.
Okay, so, Johnny, you wanna make the motion then?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. Make a motion to.
Wait, wait a second.
They're, they're asking me voting on whether to have me draft an ordinance for the two reading.
Oh, just to draft an ordinance, okay.
When they have to. So, John, you made a motion to do a one and two reading process as opposed to the one and three reading?
Well, it was again said that we could have, we could.
If we need a third one, we can, we can add it.
I'm harkening back to a, an ordinance, this is when I first got on council, ordinance that was handed out the night of the meeting. And I was the only one to vote no that night because I just received it and I was flabbergasted. And I'm about to vote on something that, uh, I didn't know we'd be voting on tonight. So, I will be, uh, compelled to vote no if.
Tonight, you're not a.
You're not being a.
Just discussion. It's, it's just.
It's a recommendation.
There we go.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth considering.
So, what I would do, if you, if you, if you vote in favor of it tonight, then what I will do is draft the language so that you can see it next month.
That's good. I'll vote aye.
I'll second John's motion to have a draft ordinance put together.
I have a motion from John to, to draft an ordinance on a two-reading procedure. And, Paul has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any others?
And one other thing, I want to invite everyone for coffee and conversation with the mayor tomorrow morning at Parlor Donuts from eight until about nine fifteen. So, if you can break away from what you're doing, the mayor is al- always very informative and you'll get some free coffee, but you might have to buy your own donuts at Parlor.
Yeah, always look forward to those. Um, anything else? Has been brought before the council?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from John.
I'll second.
Kevin, Kevin second. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.